I want my kids to have a great place to live. I want, you know, so they fully embrace what they see and they fully embrace that progress that they're seeing. So I think that's just great. But yeah, so that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to say briefly that I appreciate this board and the camaraderie that we have been able to have on issues of importance to our city. No, we don't agree all the time. We shouldn't agree all the time.
No.
But we respect each other and we continue to work together for the betterment of all. And I'm proud to be your mayor and proud to lead this team for at least, well, for two more years. So I also want to mention I was able to meet with our emergency management board this past week. Again, talk of cities and counties don't talk and work together, but this board is made up of the mayor of Calixburg and the county judge of Boyd County. And I was there and we met together and they're going to be unveiling, hopefully in the first of the year, a brand-new office for the management of emergencies that come forward like our ice storms and floods. It's supposed to be state-of-the-art, so I'm really excited for that. And again, it's a partnership between all of us that's making this happen. And I appreciate the continued work of our first responders everywhere for what they do. And also want to mention real quick, the Ashland Alliance put an email out this morning. They're still looking for volunteers for assistance with parade, the parade. So if there are folks that are part of the alliance that has employees that are looking for service hours, this would be a great opportunity. It is next week, though, so just reach out to the Ashland Alliance. Onto the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to cover a couple of things with you. We recently received a letter from the Energy and Environmental Cabinet, specifically Division of Water. You'll recall that when we were under the agreed order with the state, one of the requirements we had to do is capacity study. And for a variety of reasons, we thought our capacity to produce water was about 17 million gallons. This report confirmed that we can safely maintain production of 20 million gallons a day of quality water. So when you put that in perspective, currently, we use between 9 and 11 million gallons a day. So that's a lot of capacity. And when you think about the economic, potential economic impact of it, that we have that capacity, that's really a big deal.
Who knows?
Another thing is that seven of the 12 generators that we had ordered for the water pump stations have arrived. We'll put those out for bid and get those installed as soon as possible. I know that's been an ongoing, we really suffered during the last ice storm in the spring of '21 or in the winter of '21, so that's good news. If you can move to the next slide, please. Wanted to show, we put this out on Facebook. We didn't put a lot of details on it, but we just received this bucket truck. The cost was $134,000. If we were to order that same truck today, it would cost around $200,000. You know, periodically, we give updates, the staff does, on the cost of goods, chemicals, et cetera, that have increased. But it's pretty significant. Some of the so-whats for this truck, it's a four-by-four, so they can get in some places they could not have attempted before. It's a gas motor, so they don't have to regularly go out and run it to burn the engine to keep that clean, so it's much more flexible. It's a two-man bucket instead of a one-man. It's got a 45-foot reach. It's a little bit farther reach than we had before, some upgraded tool bins. It's just a really nice piece of equipment, and I wanted to share some of those details. The old truck is going to go to the Parks Department. They will not use it quite as much as the streets did, but it's a good place to squeeze every inch of life out of the old bucket truck that we have. So I wanted to share that information with you. Next, please. Also, we put a Facebook post out recently about the moving of the memorials from Armco. This first photo is from the Belmont, excuse me, Belfont Blast Furnace. It was dedicated in June of 1942. The dedication occurred with Mr. Verity, the founder and chairman of Armco at the time. The Kentucky governor, Keene Johnson, was also in attendance. This next picture is of the other monument. This one reflects the dedication marker for Armco's new Amanda Blast Furnace. It contained a keystone and date stone from the original Amanda furnace that operated from 1829 to 1855. Really want to thank Mel Smith, who's with Cleveland Cliffs, for helping us coordinate this. It's a, it just would have been history that would have been lost. So it's currently underneath the bridges. Streets and parks have done an excellent job of emplacing that thing along with coordination from Cleveland Cliffs. We're going to pretty it up and we're going to get some additional signage down there, and then we'll have a ribbon cutting for it in the future. We don't have a date on that yet. A couple of the, a couple of the last things I wanted to mention was convention and leisure services are going to be in here in December to give an update on their feasibility study for the conference center. And also Palmer Engineering will be here for an update on the downtown redevelopment that we have. Mayor, commissioners, that's all I had.
Okay. At this time, we're going to do public participation. Anybody coming forward with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business services or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. We have, presentations are limited to five minutes. Yellow light indicates 30 seconds remain, and red light means the time limit has expired. Only one speaker is permitted per subject. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are asked to fill out an inquiry form and leave it with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department. Would anybody like to come forward at this time?
There was such an overflow crowd today.
Hearing none, we will move on to old business.
I didn't say this, thank you as well, Mike, for the last two years. I didn't, I didn't thank you explicitly, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right, old business item A. Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Establishing Promulgating Certain Procedural Regulations and Prerequisite Qualifications Relating to Recruitment and Selection of Police Officers for the Department of Police of the City of Ashland, Providing for a One-Year Probation Period of Service Upon Original Employment as Police Officer, Requiring Certain Prescribed Related Education and Training and Further Providing for Performance Evaluation Standards of Discipline for All Such Employees." This ordinance is to be known and referred to as Comprehensive Hiring Ordinance for Police Officers for the Department of Police, and repealing ordinance number 170, series of 2021, as amended by ordinance number 26, series of 2022.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B. Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在Amending Part II，在Employment Process of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan, as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended."
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C. Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在着法，and Directing the Mayor，to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Olive Hill Trucking, Inc.,for the Purchase of Gravel, Stone, and Sand for the Department of Public Services and the Department of Utilities."
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D. Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在着法，and Directing the Mayor，to Execute an Agreement with Kings, Daughters, and Sons, the Subrecipient of $20,000 from the 2022 Program Year Community Development Block Grant."
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E. Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在Amending Section 6 of Ordinance Number 157, Series of 2020, Regarding Rules and Regulations for Special Event Fees and Costs."
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F. Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在Radifying and Approving the Action of the Fire Chief's Acceptance and Execution of the Department of Homeland Security's Fiscal Year 2021 Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the Amount of $384,939.90, of which $349,945.36 is federal funding and $34,994.54 is the city's match for a vehicle exhaust system for three fire stations and two-way radios.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
A resolution, the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在Adopting, Authorizing, and Approving the Course of Action Presented by the City Manager on the Items Appearing on the Consent Agenda for the Regular Meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of November 17, 2022.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
On number five, what are, what's the sets of bunker gear? Chief, what is that? Just curious.
We call it bunker gear, and that's our panes or coat.
Okay.
And let me, let me further have you elaborate. This is important because you have a need, correct?
A few years ago, they put a limb in a 10-year bunker gear, a pipe. So we had to replace it. And they also put a big influence on after a fire, getting that thing in the washing machine, get it washed off, get the cancer-causing toxins out of it. So we all need a second pair of gear because, you know, that comes up. And with the limits we have, sometimes it's hard to replace them. We have to set a 10-year, that's within that 10-year limit. So this will allow us to have everybody that, and we can start from here and be able to replace them at a rate that they would make sure everybody keeps two sets a year and, you know, they make the most. You know, they recommend not even after a fire using them the rest of the day.
Yeah. This is, this has been a request of our, I know our fire department has talked about this for a long time, so it's wonderful to see that we're able to finally provide this for our men, and they deserve that. They deserve to know that we care enough to make sure that anything that could potentially harm them, they don't have to wear the rest of the day. So I think that's a great step forward for you all, and our commitment to you, I think, with this is, with this purchase is important. So thank you.
We appreciate it, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay.
New business item A. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在着法，and Directing the Mayor，to Submit the Program Year 2022 Amended Action Plan, Original Action Plan Adopted by Ordinance Number 14, Series of 2022, Increasing the Community Development Block Grant in the Amount of $68,292.30 upon acceptance of said application for MUD, to execute on behalf of the City of Ashland in agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, to enable the city to undertake these activities and/or any and all other documents associated with the grant submitted."
So move.
Second.
Well, any discussion, sorry? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Item B. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在着法，and Directing the Mayor，to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland and Thoroughbred Construction Group, LLC, for the Water Treatment Plant Roof Replacement in the Amount of $223,668.45 for the Department of Utility Operations, Division of Water Production."
So move.
Second.
Again, this is furthering our commitment to making sure our utilities are taken care of. It's important that the facilities that these operations are in are clean and safe, and I think this is an important step for them as well. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Item C. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在着法，and Directing the Mayor，to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland and Rossman Enterprises, Inc., DBA Magna Grip, for the Purchase and Installation of a Vehicle Exhaust System in the Amount of $158,870, $807 for the Ashland Fire Department.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在着法，and Directing the Mayor，to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland and All American Fire Equipment, Inc.,for the Purchase of Bunker Gear in the Amount of $122,550 for the Ashland Fire Department."
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item E. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在着法，and Directing the Mayor，to Execute a Memorandum of Agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Energy and Environmental Cabinet, Division of Abandoned Mine Lands, and the City of Ashland, to Govern the Design of the Ashland Convention Center Abandoned Mine Land Economic Revitalization Project, Appointing Commissioner Amanda Clark as the Project Representative, and Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to execute on behalf of the City of Ashland, any and all documents associated with the grant."
So move.
Second.
While she is not here today, I want to recognize Commissioner Clark for her efforts to secure this grant and save the local tax base on this project. It's, once again, each of our commissioners step up to the plate when called to help out when, when they can, and this is a, this is a great, great grant, and I appreciate the state and, of course, the federal government for their assistance as well.
She has a special skill there, and we...
Absolutely. We want to, we want to use it.
My point is to bring it to bear, that's right.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item, excuse me, item F. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在Adjusting the Compensation for the Mayor and City Commissioners."
So move.
Second.
Just quickly on this, part of our, taking a look at compensation, we wanted to make sure that we were in full compliance with state law, and so to do that, we made some adjustments and also adjusted for inflationary pressures. But I appreciate our legal counsel's work on this. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在Establishing Fees for Parking Spaces in the Parking Garage Located at 17th Street and Carter Avenue."
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在Amending Sections 1 through 9 of Ordinance Number 32, Series of 2018, Previously Amended by Ordinance Number 176, Series of 2021, Commonly Known as the Garbage Sewer and Water Ordinance, Regulating the Collection and Disposal of Garbage."
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just say, this is a, last year, back when I was in much better shape than I am right now. I was honored to spend some time working alongside our sanitation workers, and the thing that I came away with, other than I needed to run more, was that they, they deal with anything that's, that's there. They, they just take it with a smile on their face. And some things I learned the hard, I learned the hard way that day that they really shouldn't have to, but they do. So, so, you know, hopefully this will, this will help them a little bit in their job force, because I don't, I don't know, I mean, as far as popularity, they're one of the most popular groups that's out there as far as the city, so we appreciate them.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item I. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky，在Amending the City of Ashland Flexible Spending Plan, Adopted by Ordinance Number 86, Series of 2020, as recommended by McGregor and Associates, Inc., pursuant to federal guidelines."
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item J is a discussion item on splash pad.
The splash pad has come up as, as an item that is set in the budget. What, what I'd like to have, based on our park board's counsel with the city manager, is to have a thorough review of our, our park system and a park plan put in place. I would like to see our city staff's input prioritized as to the input, along with, of course, our counsel from our park board. We appreciate you all giving us counsel every month on different projects, and I think you know we continue to spend significant amounts of money to keep our parks in great shape, and we want to continue to do that. And we also want to make sure we have a top-notch park system for many, many years to come. So with your leadership, Kim, I know it's going to happen, and we thank you. Any other discussion on that?
So this would be like a master plan?
I think that, that's, that's how I would envision it, and what we want to make sure is we have public input so that we get ample opportunity to know what our citizens want in our parks.
I think that's really a great idea, because, you know, as everybody knows, each one of our parks has its own attributes...
Sure.
...that are special.
Sure.
And you can't treat them all the same, because they're all individual and have their own charms and flora and fauna and usage. So I think this is a really good idea.
Would it be impossible, city manager, to have something in place within 90 days?
I think it's reasonable, Mayor. We can take our first stab at it, and I got, I understand the guidance to be look at each of the 14 parks, come up with a master plan, long-term plan for those, and I believe we got the skillset to do it.
And the wants and needs. Most importantly, the wants and needs.
And the maintenance.
Yes.
I think it's a great idea. We've, we've budgeted $1,500,000 in the last little while for our park system, and they've been upgraded. I know the ballplayers that I'm involved with are very thankful for all the ballfields, all the scoreboards, the, you know, the replacement of dugouts and everything, and then, you know, upcoming, we're, we're looking for, for lights coming toward AK Park, and I think the citizens are overjoyed about that. I'm at the dog park every day, and I mean, that, that was just, it's great, and you meet people, you, you have a little fraternity there. I'm even on a Facebook page with, with people saying, "I'm going to be there at 10 o'clock. Are you going to bring Smokey?" Or whatever the name dog is, you know? And, and it's just like a little, you know, you learn to, and there's people from all the tri-state. There's people from West Virginia and Irrington and so forth, and so I really appreciate the park system, and this is what's unique about Ashland. My, my grandkids and stuff come from Lexington. There's no, so I said, "Poppy, there's no river there," you know? I said, "Yeah," you know? And, and they enjoy it, coming to the Christmas parade, coming to the Winter Wonderland of Lights, coming to the different events that we have. And my hat's off to the park board. I mean, I've got, I have a history. Steve Gilmore and E.B. Jevenin and now Kim, and I look forward to your input, and I think it's a great idea to have a master plan.
Okay. Any other discussion on the matter?
No, I'll just say, yeah, I think this is, this is a good move, and we talked about this a little bit during budget session, the importance of looking long-term, not just for the parks, but, but financially, there are cities who, believe it or not, do long-term, you know, driven from the top down, long-term financial planning, and it's, it's not perfect. There, there are things that come along, but, but I think that, looking at things, and I know that we're looking at a strategic plan overall soon, good cities that grow in meaningful ways, those are things that they have, and it's important to do this. We all have things that we're passionate about and we're going to advocate for. It's, it's, it's important to not be doing those things and trying to piece things together, not just parks, but overall. We have a strategic plan that we're all pulling, remember the, the horse pulling in the same direction, that, and that's, that's a part of that, so.
Okay.
Comment on that?
Sure.
Just got an email from Raftellus, who's the company that's going to help us with our strategic plan, not to be confused with the master plan that you, that you all have just directed, mayor and commissioners, but we will have a, have a questionnaire that will go out to the city staff within the next couple of weeks together, information from the city staff, everybody. Then we'll have a working session for a half-day with the leadership, the city, the directors and myself, and then we'll have an off-site with the elected officials in January, January or February.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Now any other discussion? Hearing none, we're going to move on to executive session to discuss potential and pending litigation.
Need a motion to go into executive session for those purposes.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to go to executive session.
Okay.[1357.01]
The executive session, potential pending litigations were discussed. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Come on. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, y'all.